First item on the agenda is roll call, please.
Beno.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Smith-Ben.
Here.
Mar.
Here.
Holda.
Here.
Majewski. Schnelli.
Here.
And Molsan and Glush are absent, excused tonight.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the minutes of June 2nd, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve? Wait a second. Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public appearances. At this time, we have, if anybody in the audience or the public wants to have some comments either regarding anything that's on or off the agenda, you can do it at this time. Limited to three minutes. Otherwise, you're going to proceed.
We do have a few people that filled out the form, Greg. So we have Judy Knutson that would like to speak.
Okay. Hi Judy.
In fact, I'm just going to speak the first time, just for thirty seconds. I just want to thank-
I'll time that.
Yeah. I'm retiring as of July 28th, so I want to thank the board for being so gracious, working with me, how we got some of these businesses in here, and it was because of you guys. So I thank you so much for all your help. I know I called some of you on the phone personally and things like that, and I thank you so much. So, thank you.
Thank you Judy. Thanks for the work you've done for the village and the Chamber of Commerce.
And we have another person, Don Koopman.
Just relax, just come on in.
My name is Don Koopman. My husband and I live at 941 Augusta Drive. In the Village of Oregon, right next to the proposed condo lot on Augusta Drive. We have a few concerns about the proposed design modifications primarily related to water drainage and the tree line nature preserve privacy along this side of the lot. We currently get a fair amount of water settlement on the west side of the property already in the winter, early spring, and during heavy rains. With the amount of buildings, basements, and concrete in the proposal, our concern is that the water settlement will not only increase but get worse, considering, especially considering how close the buildings are to our lot line, which is anywhere from sixteen to twenty feet. That proximity could eliminate the current tree line, which holds a variety of wildlife, provides natural water barrier, and its root system. Our ask of the committee is to guarantee proper water drainage with the, will be attained without any property disturbance, both during and after the development, and the planned modifications be made to ensure a current tree line or something, a privacy line, nature line by our lot line.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Judy, did you want to come back up?
Yeah. This is where I get my thirty minutes.
Judy Knutson, I live at forty-three, excuse me, 1004 Finn Castle Street, right across the street from this, and so the driveway will be right by my driveway, so it's going to butt right up over Bergamot Boulevard. The only thing that I'm worried about is water drainage, number one, because if you see Eagle Drive already, where the other condos went, they're already digging it up because they have water issues. So water is a big thing that we got to really watch out for. The other thing is mailboxes. Where are we going to put those mailboxes? Because again, Eagle Drive has them right on the street. That gets backed up. Every time I try to come home, that's all backed up and people are pulled over on the wrong side getting their mail. So if you can take the mailboxes in account too, so that there's some kind of open space where they go, I don't know how you do it, but I know the post office has a lot to do with it, but I'd like you to look into that, so there's open space and not by the driveway, because it's really a big thing there. And HOA rules, if we can have, watch for street parking. We can't have street parking, so I'm hoping they don't have street parking. But, you know, I don't know how, if you can do that or you can't do that. That's one thing I just wanted to look at that too. And being it's only one lane, garbage trucks, are they going to get in there? Fire trucks, are they going to get in there? So I don't know if the fireman has approved that or not. No, he hasn't. Okay. So that's just a concern of mine, to make it livable and nice, and I'm right across the street, so I'm going to be watching, because I'm retired.
You won't have the time. Okay, thank you.
Hi. My name's Lindsay Taas. I've never been to one of these before, so this is my first time. I live, my husband and I live at 286 Stoddard Drive, so we're right by, we'll be next door neighbors to the Veridian Development and the leased property, whatever. And I've seen the plans for the Veridian, the conceptual plan, and my, our only thought or question was like, if the plans are set in stone, we're wondering about the park, and if that, what we've seen in the plans is that the park is farther up the street, where there's also two other parks. And so we didn't know if that park could be moved elsewhere in this plan eventually, or somewhere like farther down, closer to us, or, you know, near the cemetery, something like that. So that was just our thought is, if the park, the park being farther up by other parks, we just kind of were like, well, I have multiple parks in one spot versus spreading them out. So that was just our.
Good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. That was it? Okay. I didn't finish what I was going to say regarding the venue. We can't necessarily respond during this part of it. Only we can respond to is what's on the agenda, and then we can do it accordingly later. So, thank you. Next item then, moving on to 4B, is pre-application consultation of conceptual plans for indoor institutional use, new, the new Oregon Library, Public Library Building, Alpine Parkway.
Hello. So, we're back. I'm Jeff Vine, the owner's rep, and this is Brett Ronniehaus from OPN. He's our architect. Kevin, our site designer from JSD couldn't be here tonight, so I'm going to fill in for him and talk about a couple of changes that we've made to our site plan. And then Brett's going to go through some exterior images of changes that we made to the exterior of the building. A lot of what we're, we've been doing for the last month or so is in response to some estimating that we got after our schematic design drawings were done. And had that estimate come back, and the way the construction market is, we were significantly over budget with that estimate, and so we're going to be bidding this out in October. And rather than wait until then, we decided to figure it out now and make changes so that hopefully we can hit the budget when we, when we get to the bid in October. So the one thing that happened here is that the footprint of the building has become smaller, so we went from approximately, how many square feet, to how many square feet?
Just over thirty-five, so it was about thirty-five and a half thousand, to just over thirty-one thousand right now.
Okay, so roughly four thousand square feet reduced. The shape and the general layout and where things are on the site are the same, but the footprint of the building shrunk a little bit. And then proportionately with that, we were able to reduce a couple of our parking stalls, so we have the correct ratio that we need for the square footage of the building and the number of stalls for the staff. And so when we did that, and we're thinking about where we could take those stalls out, the area that we figured out was the best place to eliminate stalls was right where, is it Jeff's got the cursor there? We had conflict with the pathway there that's, comes off of the right away and slightly into our property. We would have to have a retaining wall right there on that path, and then there was a fairly steep drop-off because there was double-loaded parking stalls there. So there was parking stalls towards Alpine. And so we eliminated that row, which helped eliminate a lot of that other complicating cost. And then we slipped those stalls in to a couple of places in the other rows, and we kind of lengthened the parking lot out to the left and the right a little bit to accommodate them. And so we, we saved money and just kind of redistributed where the parking was. The other thing that I think is new since we were here last time was the inside of those two half-moon shapes on each end of the parking lot, where we ramped down a little bit in elevation to get from the upper parking lot to the lower parking lot in front of the front door. The inside of those curves, it's hard to see on this plan, but there's sidewalk along there now. So somebody that's parking up top towards Alpine can walk to the pathways to the center, or, you know, if they're parking on the end of those strings of parking stalls, then they can use that sidewalk to get down and across over to the sidewalk in front of the building. So we've helped people having to, to, you know, walk a long distance to get everybody to that center. A couple of other things that happened on the site is we reduced some of the connectivity that we had with concrete sidewalks. We had a connection like you see on the right side of the page to that pathway that goes around the property. We had one of those also on the other side of the page. That, that pathway and that sidewalk was crossing the, the drive that goes into the turnaround area for that dumpster area, and then the, the main purpose of that drive-through area is for the book drop at the building. And so we didn't want those sidewalks crossing all of that traffic that many times either, and we figured if we had one, one connection and we have connection along Alpine to get in, you know, to our site, we've got enough connectivity there. So we eliminated some of that concrete sidewalk, and there was some potential pathways or sidewalks in the back of the building to get up to our terrace. And now that's just going to be kind of a fairly gentle sloped lawn area that people can still get access to the building, but we don't have, you know, impervious surface that we're paying for a building to make that connection. Other than that, I think the layout is very similar to what we had the last time around. We've got a couple of areas where we have room for future expansion, and then that, that area where you see that hatching, the orange color, that's the area that's planned for our geothermal field for our HVAC system. That's where the wells will go. And if we do parking expansion in the future, we would expand out over that well area in the future. So we've got room for future parking expansion as well. So are there any questions or comments on the site portion before we have Brett look at the exterior with you guys?
Anybody?
The only comment I would make is I would go ahead and show the double-loaded parking as dashed for future expansion. And as well as the double-loaded on the, I'm going to call it the right-hand side, which I think is the south, correct? It's a little, you're short there, right where Jeff had the, his hand, right there, like three or four stalls. Dash those in for future. It makes the approval process easier when you want to come back if you need to.
Okay.
That's all. I'm not asking you to put them in now, but I think that it would make the approval process easier.
Okay. And just as far as a point of what's happening with their schedule, we do plan to submit on July 21st, the full site plan package, hoping to be on the agenda on August 4th for the, for our approval. So we will, we will have all of that type of detail, and then we will include that dotted in future areas on that set of plans.
Is the path that goes around, is that still intended to be paved, or is that gravel, or what is that?
Right now, it's asphalt pavement. Any other questions?
Apparently not.
All right. Okay Brett, take it away.
Thanks Jeff. All right, so the last time we were here, the building has changed pretty drastically with not only the size reduction in the building, but then also we changed construction types of the building to try to bring some of the costs down of the building. So instead of going with a full metal steel building, we're now looking at a hybrid metal and some wood framing in there as well. So we tried to simplify the design here and bring the two, the single-story and the two-story portions together, and simplify the diagram between the two. So bringing this, the tan that you're seeing there is a wood-like product that really brings the two pieces together, and then the darker element over top really sits on top, and when you get to the back of the building, becomes kind of this perch that looks out over the nature beyond. Using those two elements to really highlight where the main entrance is in the middle there, right next to the signage there. So this would be the view from the main entrance portion to the site. Couple of things that we're still looking at are a canopy that maybe would be over that entryway to give it a little bit more interest on the entrance there. So as we come around to the south edge of the building, that dark mass wraps around, you're seeing that wood-like panel or mass pop through on the right-hand side there. On top of that wood-like element there, we are exploring that being a small patio, so it wouldn't be very big. It would be enough to come out and have some seating along there, right off of the adult collection. So just a place to go and read a book and be outside and see the nature beyond. Right next to that, or behind that are some large windows, again, connecting to the exterior there. And then as we go around to the backside of the building, this is where that darker element, that two-story, or that second story sits on top of that wood element fully, and becomes that perched element that looks out over, onto the, the nature preserve beyond. That wood element, again, always being that grounding element to the entire building, and that connection piece from the single-story to the two-story. So as it goes from the left to the right, or further north, to the children's area on the, the single-story portion where it kind of peaks up in that corner, again, bringing in a lot of windows to connect back to nature. And then as we go, yep, right there. So trying to give everybody a good perspective to the nature beyond. What we're not showing in here is how that patio that you saw in the site plan, how that would all react with this yet. So we're still working on bringing all of those elements together. But really, in the middle there, that's where the lobby is, and using that as kind of the organizing piece to the entire building. And then to the north portion of the building, looking back, the, that really is kind of, this building really doesn't have a backside of it, but it is the most utility side of the building with the book drop and the mechanical space being on this portion of the building. So really drawing your eye back across the building to the backside or to the front side of the building.
You're on. So we've got, I think, I can see how you've, you've progressed the project to, to meet the needs of the budget, but we still have a fairly good amount of glass on the south and the, on all the facades. I'm not too concerned about it on the east, but the south and the west, we still have a good amount of glass. I see that you've got a, an eve overhang on the top level, and the second floor can leave us out over the first to create some shadow. Are you proposing anything else, especially on the south, or on the west, or the north side of that first floor building to help mitigate some of those gains, whether it be frayed glass, or a sun shade, or something like that?
Right. On the south elevation, the one, the right side here, that for sure, we would want to explore some sun screening on that. On the westmost portion, it's kind of almost southwest, so that main entrance facade, what we've done is we've taken the glass and made it much smaller than what we had in the previous option, and tried to focus a lot of the glass, maintain most of the glass that we had on the backside of the building, and reduce the amount of glass that we have on the front side of the building. And we probably will still need to explore some sort of solar shades or something like that. We're hoping we can handle most of it with blinds on the inside, because the windows are much smaller. They're not these grand twenty-foot spans of, of windows there now. We're talking about much smaller glass, which is more appropriate on the front side of the building there anyway. So we're still exploring all of them.
I also think that it'd be nice to, if you go to that front elevation, or the main elevation of the building, the procession of it, the, you've just, you've got this sort of black hole where the entry is, and it reads as the entry, but something that helps to define it, as you had mentioned, with a canopy or something, I think will help that elevation and the wayfinding process on that. I, I can understand the logic behind what you've done and how people can get from a parking stall to the building. I think you've done a nice job with that. The materials on it make sense, assuming it's all like a Hardy plank or something like that?
We were investigating Hardy plank or Saraclad. Something along those lines is probably going to be in the price point. We were also investigating using a stone for a portion of it, but it becomes, became such a small portion of it that it was like, why? You know, because it didn't have the overall impact that we were hoping to do. So that's where we simplified it down to the two materials that we're trying to use overall.
And the roof has been converted to an asphalt shingle?
Yeah, it is. So yes, thank you for bringing that up. If you go, can you go to the south edge? It might just be the next shot here. Yeah, so you'll see how it's, previously, it was pretty equal pitch on the front to the back. What we've done is kind of tipped it a little bit more to where it's a little bit more prevalent on the front side of the building to give it kind of an uneven eve to it. A couple of things that that was driven by was moving to wood. We needed to have two column bays, so we were playing with what that looks like as opposed to an equal on both sides. But yes, we are looking at asphalt shingles on the main two-story portion with the sloped roof. On the single-storing, we're, single-story portion, we're looking at an EPDM ballasted roof.
You said you were looking at putting a canopy over the entryway. Will that be large enough so you can have one or hopefully two lanes of traffic through it, that's where you get complete coverage of people and kids?
We, we are currently not designing a covered drop-off lane.
I guess with the experience with Methodist Church and how it's functioned, I would just say that a canopy is really a great thing to pull through, covered, and I'm sure that the dollars can be spent other places, but it would be, to me, it'd be something that should be on the want list.
Well, I think the, the problem or the thing that complicates that, Larry, is the drop-off area. They have a drop-off area that's to the right as you look at this elevation. The drop-off area isn't right at the main entry. Did that go away?
That is one of the things that also, by the way.
Okay. Okay. All right.
The book drop-off is right here.
Yeah.
But the people drop-off is just right through this crosswalk, right?
Yeah, but I do think it's helpful to look at the site plan and to see how far we would have to build some sort of structure to get out to that driveway. So what Brett was talking about was that we're, we're going to introduce that canopy so we can at least get the pedestrians under a canopy when they get out of the vehicles, but we wouldn't be able to get something out far enough to cover up the vehicles.
Okay, anybody else? Any questions? Okay, you'll see it. Well, you won't see me next month, but.
Thank you.
All right, we appreciate it.
Next item is the pre-application consultation of conceptual plans for the Augusta Drive condominiums at Parcel, 1650, oh my gosh, submitted by Fleming Development, I'm sorry.
Hello. I'm Jake Fleming with Fleming Development. Thanks for having me tonight. The development we are proposing here is twenty-three units total, seven standalone with, seven standalone and then sixteen duplex-style units. You can see on the site plan there. Two of the, two buildings, so four units would come off of Augusta, and then the main road would come off of Bergamot Boulevard and serve, you know, obviously the majority of the units there. All the units would be approximately sixteen hundred square foot, two-car garage, two-bedroom, two-bath. We're, we're shooting, and this all kind of depends on elevations and things like that, but we really like to go towards the zero-entry design model. So, you know, low, you know, zero-entry into the house, zero-entry master showers, things like that. It'll be, you know, first-floor laundry, open floor plan. There will be full, full basements, so it would be an option for people to add square footage if they so choose. Exterior will most likely be vinyl siding with some stone, and then asphalt roofs. We're going towards a mix of some earthy-type exterior colors that will be set, and then depending on, you know, when, when the buyers come in during the construction process, you know, aside from moving walls around and things like that, they can, they can really, you know, select all their own finishes as far as flooring and countertops and cabinets and things like that. So yeah, that's kind of the, the quick overview of it.
Greg, just to provide a little context for, for you all and for those in the public that might not know, a little bit of the history of this project, that this is right behind those Italian-looking condos there at the corner of Bergamot and Augusta. There was a plan passed back in the mid-two thousands, that's on that next page. This was the original plan. Every, all the, the building one was the one that was built, those thirteen units, you know, have been there for the last fifteen, twenty years. The other buildings were intended as a possible future phase. They were going to be similar design, similar, I think, layout in terms of the walk-up units. And the recession happened, the market has changed, and so that's driving the change. I think we had about twenty-five people there, so it was a good conversation. A lot of the concerns that were mentioned earlier in the meeting were the same ones I heard two weeks ago, mostly stormwater. So, I tried to walk through a little bit of what our stormwater management guidelines are now in that engineering process and then also the concern about loss of kind of that buffer with the trees there along the eastern property line. So, Dan Fleming was there at that meeting and, you know, he was mentioning, of course, it's in his best interest to keep as many trees as possible and having more of that screening for people interested in purchasing the condos, but obviously there's, there's some that might need to come out and will need to come out with construction. So, there was some questions about if you all require fencing between developments. And I know in the past, we've leaned more towards landscaping rather than fencing as sort of a buffer between. So, all those details, of course, to come with more of the formal submittal, but I shared this initially with the fire department. Haven't gotten comments back with the new layout, but I know that'll definitely be something that they will take a look at, making sure that they can get back in there and access all those units. Otherwise, happy to help answer questions or turn it back over to Jake.
Anybody have any questions?
I like to look at the buildings.
The craftsmen.
Is there, is there any covenants to the development that's around this? Do you know?
You're talking the original thirteen, ever-built?
No, I'm talking about the neighborhood, the neighboring properties themselves. Are there covenants to those properties?
I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head.
Are you talking about, like, the, yeah, the HOA is for Bergamot is still on Augusta. There's an HOA, well, there's prairie grass, additional pine meadows.
Where I'm going with this is, I'm not trying to blindside it. My question is genuine. I want, you had mentioned that the buildings were looking to have stone and vinyl siding and detailing and all that kind of stuff, but if the covenants for the neighboring properties don't allow vinyl siding, I think that you need to take a look at what your neighbors' standards are and build to those as well.
Yeah.
So, I, that's where I'm, that's where I'm coming from, is as you go through this process, take a look at what your neighbors had to do and match that level.
Yep.
I think that the feedback from the fire department will be important because the drive is long enough where you're going to have to have some kind of a hammerhead turnaround, blah, blah, blah. And then the other one, also that was brought up with the, it's a newer thing that's come up in the past year that we've had to do on developments, and that is the post office box that you're going to have to find a place for something like that as well.
Yep.
The single duplexes along Augusta Drive, I think that those are going to be fine, but the other ones, you're probably going to have to do something.
Right, yeah.
It's just something that needs to be worked out through the process. I think our zoning code, as far as the buffer, our zoning code allows for an either-or kind of option. You could be a fence or it can be landscaping.
Landscaping, okay.
So, just take a closer look and work with staff and Elise specifically on that.
Yep.
You've heard the comments of the neighbors. I think that they're fair.
Right.
So, just be mindful of those things as you go through the process. I think that, I agree. I think it's a good development. It's something similar to what we've approved in the past. I think the level of detail that you've got shown in the two pictures is fair.
Okay.
So, I think you're going down the wrong, the right path. I just think that it's the details that, I'm sorry. I think I said wrong. Sorry. You're going down the right path.
You're going down the right path, yeah.
It's just the details that need to be hammered out and, you know, keep the neighbors in the loop.
Definitely.
Okay. Yes. I'm sorry, anybody else have something to say?
I agree with John. The product that you're looking to produce here is certainly in demand and very viable. I don't like the, appear to be twelve-foot setbacks on the Bergamot Boulevard setbacks off the street. I don't think there's anything else on Bergamot Boulevard anywhere near that narrow a setback. So, I think that, that needs to get looked at. It didn't show from Augusta what the setbacks were. I'm almost certain that this, this drive aisle should continue around and come back out on Augusta as many units as you have in there. I think that's an awful long dead end back in there, and the fire department may, may or may not say the same thing.
Okay.
And then just parking space, you know, I realize they all have two-car garages, but people, visitors that don't park in the garage.
Right.
A lot of these don't appear to have very much clearance off of the drive aisle to stack cars in front of the garage, and I think that's a definite necessity, so you'd have to look at that as well.
Okay. Yeah, we can explore that.
I'm just waiting to make sure everybody else has anything else. Jeff has.
Just some quick comments. One of the things that we did look at and to kind of address some of the concerns over stormwater, I believe, and we'll have to look at this further, but the original plan for Bergamot, the stormwater didn't have the stormwater coming down from this corner, I think. I think it out, we've, we've let them know that they have to convey all their stormwater out to the street. So, what's happening out there now, I mean, I've seen it and I've walked around out there. There's some little mini canyons, if you will, that show the stormwater going back there. I would hope, and I, with the design, will have to make sure that the stormwater, instead of going back here to the corner, goes out to the, to the street now, or will go out to the street. So, I think that kind of addresses some of the concern. The, Judy, you mentioned street parking. Those are all public streets through there, so.
Yeah, but we're doing, we're, I have our HOA. We can't park on street.
I don't think the HOA can restrict that.
HOA can't, can't, can't usurp a public right-of-way, so. I mean, it's public right-of-way, and that's what I'm saying. I think, I, I would assume that's in just the gated area, but everything else is public.
Not the gated area.
No, I know, but everything else is just public road. So, I'm not saying park wherever, but I don't, there's nothing that the police department can do about it because it's, it's open. I, that's the first I've heard of not allowing street parking on a public right-of-way because we don't have that anywhere in the village.
We have cameras in there and things like that too, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all I had on those two.
All right. Guess we'll see you again.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. The next item is item four D, which is. Pre-application consultation of conceptual plans for the leased property development located east of Perry Mountain Cemetery to the west of Rustic Vineyard Park, submitted by Veridian Homes.
All right. We're getting ready for the presentation. Please pause your spatial identification. All right. Does that work? Is it turned on?
There we go.
Perfect. Excellent. Lazy doesn't work, but it. Don't work on the screen.
That's all right. You've got big TVs all around. Good evening, everybody, and thanks for having us tonight. I'm Chris Sellers with Veridian Homes and with me is Matt Brink, also with Veridian Homes, Dan Day, our engineer, and then Brian Munson, still on Fourth of July vacation here as our planner with Vanderbilt Associates. And we're very happy and excited to be here. Been looking for the right opportunity to, to develop and build in Oregon for some time, just haven't been able to find it until working with the Elise family and this, this property came up and this is perfect fit for us. So, what we're going to talk through tonight is just kind of what we're planning on doing and what Veridian does. And again, encourage anyone and everyone to come and look at any of our neighborhoods that we've built over the past twenty-three years since Veridian was formed and take a look at how well the houses have held up in the neighborhood itself and today. Building homes that enrich lives and realize dreams. That's especially true in today's housing market. It's tough and it's, it's starting to swing. We've gone through a couple of years here of people overbidding and trying to find a, a house to purchase with such a shortage of inventory in Dane County, and now you can see the swing is happening. It's going the other way. People are even saying recession may be coming, but what it's ultimately going to do is free up housing and hopefully stabilize price points. One thing we are targeting here too, and I'll talk about it in a second, is the first step of our guiding principles is just the targeting really age-specific for the entry-level buyer and what that means in today's market. So, we really, when we're doing a new neighborhood and a new community, we have three guiding principles and integrate housing options in both format and price point. We have a wide variety of price points. I'll kind of talk in vague on those tonight because, again, material and labor just seems to be shifting by the day, but we, we do have some ability to purchase in bulk and we have a lumber distribution company that we own, which helped, own, which helps us to stay out ahead and buy, purchase lumber futures to keep those price points attainable. We build housing that supports many needs of the community. Twenty-five years of master planning experience facilitate housing that meets residents' changing needs. Density and attainability is more important over the last five years. This is just an In Business article. I thought this was interesting, just came up last week. Madison, which is now kind of the greater Madison area, I believe Oregon's looped into this from an economic standpoint, but it's now one of the top one hundred metro areas in the country. And what you've seen is you've seen all this multifamily go up, but very limited amounts of housing, and the housing that has gone up, it just cannot meet, keep up with the demand. There's a lot of big businesses that have relocated here or are expanding and a lot of young families, Gen Z in particular, which is your low-to-mid twenties demographic that cannot afford a house. We're really recognizing this. We, this has turned into a large customer basis for us and we're planning on building on this heading into next year as we, we encounter the uncertainty in the home-building We do blend architectural diversity with people-friendly designs and create inherent sense of community throughout mixed use of housing and integrate the parks as well. We have over a hundred floor plans, a thousand total different elevations. We have rules of seven, so no color and no elevation can be within seven houses of each other that's the same elevation. And we're also working on creating, again, just getting back to the economics of it, the economic diversity within a neighborhood. So, you'll have houses that are in the three hundreds, you know, just down the street from houses that are in the eight hundreds. This is a, a new concept that we, we started about five years ago and we did it in Verona and it was very popular, and now we've done it in Wanakee, Fitchburg, and Madison. And really, it's, it's just blending the families at different points in their lives, utilizing the same parks, just having different-sized houses all within the same neighborhood and not so segregated, which is what you often see with developments of the past. Sustainability, final?
Yeah. So, when we look at sustainability, we think that really goes hand-in-hand with, with back-receives of neighborhood. It's hard to have a vibrant neighborhood if it's not sustainable. So, when we look at sustainability, we really look to respect, you know, the natural features inherited of the land. We want to work with the geography that's in place. Examples of that would be we're not going to make a large cut to create an exposure and thereby a walkout basement. Again, we want to work with the land and be respectful of it to the fullest extent possible. And we want to use certified, energy-efficient designs and environmentally sound practices. One of the ways that we adhere to that is that we're members of the Green Tier Program, that's a volunteer program through the Wisconsin DNR. One of the tenants of that is that we'll have an environmental management system in place for the neighborhoods. The ultimate goal of that is to have superior environmental performance, and that kind of harkens back into our marketability, casting the widest net possible for the buyer base to come into the homes, and it's something that we really, really focus on. So, that's how we kind of start to achieve sustainability.
All right. Getting down to the leased property here. So, again, I'm not sure everybody's familiar with it. Probably are, but just location-wise, it's, it's right here where the arrow is there and future middle school site, which is technically Fitchburg right now, but also it's the, the final area of, of the Maryhill neighborhood, which has been under development and construction for a number of years. And again, we're just very excited to, to come in and finish this up. It's more of a zoomed-in area or look at the site, also buddying up to St. Mary's Cemetery and Rustic Vineyard Park there. It does follow in with the newly-adapt comp plan or neighborhood plan, I should say, that the, it is a PUD development and that's what we plan on coming forward with here after tonight. And this is the layout. Again, the different colors really represent different types of housing or price points, if you will. The purple would be our twin, our very first level of homeownership opportunity. Everything in here will be for purchase. It'll be feasible. There will be no rentals from Veridian's standpoint. Veridian will not rent any of these properties. We'll be selling everything. These, the purple will also be, have carriage lane, accessibility to the back, along with individual houses, which are our entry-level product in sizes for first-time homebuyers who may not want the shared wall but would like the individual house themselves. We have that across from the park and centrally located throughout the neighborhood, in the middle of the neighborhood, surrounded by your typical single-family front-load elevated, or elevations and style housing. So, the target consumer groups, first-time homeowners, homeowners, first-time move-ups and second-time move-ups. So, again, wide variety of price points, all within the same neighborhood. And we are a developer-builder. We don't develop lots and sell them to other builders. We, everything we develop, we build for ourselves. By doing this, it helps with the price point because we don't have to do a, or have a markup on the lot and then ultimately have to sell that to a builder who's going to then provide another markup to a customer. And it also gives us the ability to set all of our own foundations. One thing that we do take pride in is pre-establishing where all foundation elevations will be laid out to ensure that side yard drainage is maintained and that you're not developing a neighborhood, selling the lots, and watching the builders come in and see who can set their house the highest. We have everything predetermined to make sure that it's, it's consistent flow between every house. The twin homes, which we just talked about here, Matt can touch on which is the entry-level house.
Yeah, so the twin homes is a really important asset class for us. This is our most attainable product that we offer. We'll have twenty-two market-rate twin homes currently planned, and this is really going to appeal to the empty nesters and the first-time buyers. As you mentioned now with the rental market, the Gen Z's, everything we've touched on so far, the twin product really allows renters specifically to look at a product and say, I can buy that, I can hold that. Because again, it's really successful for us in our other developments, and there's some increased entry-level housing options both in our neighborhood and then obviously Oregon as a whole. And as Chris was mentioning, it's similar to condo living in a way, given that it has a shared wall, but everything will be feasible. And this is really advantageous for the buyer because condominium financing is inherently more difficult than feasible financing, typically higher interest rates because it's a riskier asset class, affordability issues that can kind of muck up the process on the front-end buy or the back-end resale. And there's just, just some other general complications with letting packages in condos versus feasible. Lastly, on the twin homes, the amenities that we offer here are, you can get the same type in our detached housing. So, this isn't any kind of basic amenity package that solely goes with the twins. These are the same amenity packages that are available in our other product types. So, again, that's why this is so popular for us. It's really attainable. People can say that, you know, this will allow me to get into my home for the first time, and they can get the same really nice amenities that they get from standard detached house.
Next up, we have our carriage lane, single-family, also appealing to the, the first-time homebuyer who maybe doesn't want to have the, the shared wall or has a little bit more to spend. Getting back to what they, I highlighted that article before about the Gen Z's, the Madison area or the greater Madison area is, is last of the top one hundred cities in the country for homeownership, only four percent of the Gen Z's own a house, own a house in, in the Madison area compared to the national average of fifteen percent. And the big reason for that is just affordability and attainability and what are those price points? And there's just, it's very hard to achieve those price points. And also the landlords of all the multifamily aren't doing anybody, anybody favors by raising rents, which you're, you're hearing about all over downtown. So, it really is going to be, become a critical price point to hit, and this is very popular if you ever get out into the Fitchburg area or Verona area, especially with newly relocated employees of. And the big reason for that is just affordability and attainability and what are those price points? And there's just, it's very hard to achieve those price points. And also the landlords of all the multifamily aren't tuning anybody favors by raising rents, which you're hearing about all over downtown. So it really is going to become a critical price point to hit and this is very popular if you ever get out into the Fitchburg area or Verona area, especially with newly relocated employees of Promega or Epic and even Sub-Zero, which we see coming this way as well, the big customer base of this house and just first time homeowners who are just starting a family and want to get in and building equities in something instead of paying rent.
Yeah, next on our single family, this is our conventional type, popular people think of most commonly when they think of the single family home with the garage on the side. We'll have 114 of these designs as planned currently. And this is really going to round out the offerings that we can provide to potential buyers. This is also where we really continue to see that rule of seven that Chris mentioned earlier in the play. These houses are really going to have their own characteristics, so this allows the buyers of different types and needs and wants to find the home that works best for them, be it color, size, bedrooms, you know, any kind of key characteristic or many that they would want, this product allows us to kind of round out those offerings.
And all of these pictures are from Veridian neighborhoods that were built anywhere from five years ago to 20 years ago. So again, just to show if anyone hasn't or isn't familiar with what we do, we encourage you to drive through and take a look for yourself. House and lot transition in the scale and density across the project with maintaining community character, again, very important for us that we keep a diverse aesthetic along the streetscape and that we're not repeating styles or cutting corners with elevations. We really try to keep up the frontscapes as nice as possible. Parks and open space, Matt, I'll let you touch on this here.
Yeah, so with our parks, this is something that we really focus on at Veridian, it's something that we try to get in as early as we possibly can. And one of the key assets that we're excited about is the park, the large park that we have planned on the inside of the plant. We plan to have that attached to the Rustic Vineyards Park via a trail system that's going to add multi layers of green space to the area, something that we know our buyers are really going to focus in on from the amenity perspective, envision their kids there playing or, you know, growing out, things of that nature. And again, it just kind of harkens back to how we focus on the outside of the home as much as the inside. This is a really important characteristic that buyers are looking for nowadays and we really spend a lot of time on the other parks and open space.
And we will, we'll work with the village, we like to build the parks if we can, we would like to build them right away. It's an amenity not just for the neighborhood and for the adjacent neighborhood as well, but it's a selling point and the sooner you can get those parks built, the more inviting it is for people to move there. So it's not something we like to sit around and kick down the road and wait for. It's something we want to get in right away. Stormwater management, do you want to talk about that at all, Dan?
Sure. Stormwater management obviously will be, is part of the, part of the plan here for this site. There's been a basin planned in the southwest corner that's installed at this point in time. That basin, I've reviewed the report from Jeff, appears that we'll probably have to do some modifications to that basin to make it compliant with the current ordinances that are in place and also look to fully implement any infiltration requirements required from that area also. We do show a smaller new basin on the east side closely adjacent to the existing facility that's over there and that basin is probably going to take a smaller area than the area to the west. But those are two very important parts to our projects and obviously go into a lot of the discussions of the whole neighborhood and the context together.
And then finally, our homeowners association, we have a very stringent HOA that we set up from day one and that we have a subsidiary company that professionally manages the neighborhood during the build process. And a few things that separates us and from other developers is, again, just the strict rules that we have, particularly to everything from fence type to lawn maintenance to not parking your driveway for more than 24 hours. We also make sure that our HOAs are well funded and we require that reserve funds are built up and so when transition takes place, the, when Veridian steps away, the new, or the homeowners take, and the homeowners take over, they are required to hire a professional management company to take care of that HOA, to manage the finances, to ensure that there is no misallocation of funds down the road. And as we saw through the last recession, a lot of condo complexes, HOAs went defunct and it really became a burden on the property owners. And so it's something that we've put in place that no matter who is in that HOA or who's managing or a part of that HOA, they have to have a professional management company there to maintain the funds accordingly. Another thing that we do is we take care of all the private open space and then the CBUs. I know that's a, it's been quite the encumbrance here in the last few years. We've gotten very good at it, we're very experienced with it. In fact, we have somebody in the office, it's almost full-time job is to work with the post office and dedicate exact locations and predetermined where the locations are for all these CBUs or the cluster mailboxes. And they also have to make sense to be walkable to the homeowners, but also be out of sight. We don't like them in the, directly in the view corridors or if they are, we'll landscape around them just because they are not the most sightly thing that we've seen. So again, we're well prepared to handle that and we'll come forward in our PUD with a layout of all the CBUs locations throughout the neighborhood. That being said, any questions for us tonight?
Who's first?
Yes, my question would just be how, how many changes are we going to be asked to make on current Oregon housing types and lot lines and all that? I guess those are the things that we're going to be interested in, so.
Well, we'd come forward with a PUD and so it would all be very, I mean, it'd be detailed in there, everything, setbacks, lot lines and what have you. We'd go forward with a final plat for the entire neighborhood too and, you know, the goal would be five to six phases and be done in six to seven years probably. So there isn't room to really change anything from what you're seeing now. You know, it's something that over time, we would, you know, as each phase goes along, there may need to be a modification made to unforeseen stormwater events or something like that, but it really is in our best interest here that we stick to the plan.
Okay.
Just to piggyback on that, you know, obviously we haven't seen the preliminary plat, which would have some of those setbacks laid out, but that'll be something to determine too as to which single family zoning district or districts we want to go with for each lot. We have, you know, a couple that have these smaller lot sizes, so when we get a chance to see what those lot sizes look like, I'm sure there'll be, some of them may have more exceptions requested than others, but that would be part of the full GDP application for their planned development zoning.
Well, seeing some of the pictures that I've seen, the presentation, the setback is minimal and, which is not consistent with what we have in the village at this time. There is a couple of locations that, you know, apartment or condo type things or something, but, well, as long as I'm starting to talk a little bit here, I don't think I see any lots in here that resemble anything we have in the village of Oregon as far as standard lot sizes. Is that right, Jeff?
You know, we do have-
We have some.
We have some, yeah, we have some. And I should stress that one of the things that we have heard repeatedly from Capital Area Regional Planning Commission is our densities are not high enough. And secondly, we have an abundance of properties in the village right now that are quite frankly outside the range of affordability for first and second time home buyers. So we have stressed to Veridian, we've stressed, as staff, we've stressed to them that we need, we are missing a key demographic in our village, which are first time home buyers. And so they've, they've taken that lead with this and that's part of your, part of Veridian's model is being able, just shown in your presentation, being able to do that. So, but you're right, I mean, this is, this is something new. Highlands, another one was new for us and, but this is very similar to what we're seeing in Sun Prairie, Verona.
Yeah, I think some of the yellow lots are probably more similar to what we have for the lot width, the orange lots are much narrower.
I'd have to see some 31 and 37 foot wide lots. I'd really, I'd, right now I'll be honest with you-
Oh no, this is not the width of the lots.
Yes, yes it is.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
I thought, okay.
And if you want an example, and again, it's hard to visualize unless you can actually go walk through it. And, you know, from a square footage standpoint, we're 1,500 to 2,300 square feet plus basement in that, in those sized lots. Right over off Lacy and Seminole in Fitchburg, we've built a neighborhood of just 31s and twin homes.
Lacy and Seminole?
Lacy and Seminole in Fitchburg, over by Sub-Zero and the Hop House, Black Hawk Church. I'd encourage you, if you want or whoever wants to, we have a furnished model over there too, you can walk through. It's a newer concept that has been adapted in the last few years by your neighboring municipalities, Verona, Fitchburg, McFarland, and same thing, didn't have it before, didn't know what to expect, came in and showed it to them and it's become extremely popular with first time homeowners, that younger demographic.
I'll be willing to go look, look at it, but I'll tell you, I'll be honest with you, right now I don't like 31 foot lot and 37 foot lots. I just, I can't imagine. And I will, I will go have an open mind, I'll go look.
It, you know what, it eliminates the ability to store a boat on the side of the house. I mean, that, that's something that, I don't know if you like that or not, but some people don't, I mean, that's what it does. And you drive Maryhill and there's boats out on the side of the house, so.
I live in Maryhill.
I know, I know. So, and there's different fence types that about to do, so go look at the side yards of Maryhill and then just, I mean, that's really what we're, we're doing. We're taking the garage from the side of the house, we're positioning it behind the house. Same square footage, you just push it, position it behind the house on that alleyway. You can narrow down the lot by doing that and, you know, ask yourself, what, what do people need such a wide side yard setback for? What do they do with it?
With that point being made, what, with these sized lots, what would be the proximity of one house to the other?
It would, it doesn't mean every house would be 10 feet apart, but that's the closest that we'd get. So like a 31 foot lot would allow for five and a half inches on each side yard, so that's 11 feet between, 11 feet between houses.
Because I know that some of the homes that, in Fitchburg, I believe, I don't know if it was a Veridian development or not, the lots where they start to become more pie shaped, the homes become very close. And there are times where those, the corners of those homes can be within literally six feet of each other because you can touch almost, I stand in between them and you can touch them. So I guess that's, that's my nervousness on this and I'm not kidding because I was with my friend who's a fire department member in Fitchburg.
So on the Veridian sites and every one of them that we've done, the minimum side yard is five feet, plus they always have a half foot extra space. We've done that since the first PUDs that we came up with, with Smith's Crossings in Sun Prairie and Grandview Commons in Madison. All of those homes have minimum five foot side yard setbacks and like I said, we've had them, we've done this since 2002, I think is when we started Grandview Commons, but there's no homes in Veridian neighborhoods that are six feet apart. First of all, fire code doesn't allow it in the single family residential, the way you, the way that's typically built.
I applaud you for the market that you're going after and I applaud you for the diversity in house types and I don't have a problem with the expansion of the park on the right-hand side of your development because it expands on that and there's, there's development that's further to the east and it makes that park centrally located in that area. So I think that that's perfectly reasonable. One question I've got is along the northern edge, there's like a green area between two terrace lots. What is that green? It's like a-
Yeah, so we've, we've kind of programmed some space in there because the stormwater from the parcel to the north actually comes in that zone right there, John. So we've allowed an area to have the overflow stormwater from the north come to our site there and then we pick it up from the storm sewer there to bring it to the southwest storm. So that's what that's programmed. Instead of trying to put that on somebody's side yard and on an easement, we've just learned over the years, you're better off having an outlaw. I've done it the other way too many times.
And then the same thing, we're going to have to have a lift station out here probably because this doesn't gravity.
I bet it will, gravity's going towards main street.
That's what, that's what we're still working with them to figure out. This should be able to flow at least the eastern half to the vineyard pump station, which has plenty of space. And then hopefully, there is a divide right through here and this should be able to be handled by gravity sewer, correct?
So when we went back and reviewed the old drawings that were done for the neighborhood, you know, you know, yesteryear, they were actually showing the vast majority of this all going to the southwest to the existing pump station that's got the capacity to it and very little going to the east. In our initial runs through this, prior to, you know, as we were developing the concept, I've been thinking that it's going to be pretty much most of it to go to the southwest, but we got to verify that as we take the next step into the preliminary plat and looking at grades and that sort of thing. Our hope is that we do very little to the east because I know there's potential capacity issues there in most of the southwest, which there's more capacity at that station.
Vice versa.
Yeah.
The capacity is to the, to the east.
That station you're talking about is on main shoes and by door.
It depends, it depends on where you intercept here, I'd have to look at the plans, but, I mean, actually, to be honest with you, both stations are fine right now.
Oh, okay.
But-
Well, we've got some flexibility to flex it one way or the other, but we'll do what's the best for the village and hopefully just gravity drain it all to the existing stations.
Right, the point is we don't, we haven't had any discussions of any sanitary lift stations or new stations at all, so it just depends on how far they can reach with either side.
Tarpse should keep their nose where it belongs, not in tents.
Is that on record?
It is on record.
I'll take a second.
We'll stay neutral.
Not saying anything, but.
Yeah, of course, you're a public official.
I've got a couple of questions, what's the total acreage of these existing parcels? Do we know?
Forty three some acres, 44 I believe, yeah.
It looks like there's sidewalks on both sides of all the streets. What are, what are the, these typical street profiles look like as far as width?
They're going to be typical city width streets.
Typical to what Stoddard Drive is currently.
And I think the roadway on the east is going to be wider because that's meant to be a future collector, right? So we're going to adhere to all of the standards within the village on the public road riding ways. We feel that's actually very important to promote on-street parking because we think that's a critical component of it. You know, when you try to, we've done it, I mean, when you try to narrow up the streets too much, it limits the on-street parking, which we, actually goes against what we're trying to do with a lot of this too.
Makes it feel even more cramped when the houses are close together and the streets are near where, so a typical street cross section that we have throughout the village is what you're planning here, sidewalks on both sides, street parking on both sides.
These are, these are still 66 foot right of ways and then I believe we have a 70 foot right of way on-
I know it's bigger and I believe it is.
On North Parkway, whatever, whatever this is for continued, because this is an arterial and then these are collectors.
Yep.
Then you're depicting street trees throughout, is that part of the initial build out? Veridian installs them as part of the landscaping?
I can't remember what the village requirements are for street trees, but street trees are definitely something that we promote.
They would be required.
They'll be required.
Required in your development agreement.
Yeah, whoever installs them, I'm not up on the detail of that, but they will certainly be in, I mean, that's one of the, you know, when you go back through some of the older neighborhoods that we've done and, yeah, I've done a lot of them, got a lot of gray hair from it, but one of the neat things is when those tree canopies now are growing together, when you go back through those older developments, it's pretty cool. So it's, the street tree, streetscape is very important to the whole architecture and the context of the neighborhoods. It's not just the house, it's how this whole thing pieces together.
Scott, our standards require an inch and a half, one inch and a half tree per lot and not exceeding 20% of any variety across the entire development.
That's, that's good, it does add to the appeal of these neighborhoods. The narrow lots, I've seen these a lot, you know, as a builder, I despise them, but if you're going to build that narrow building with one company excavating five feet from a property line, it works as a master plan community with one builder doing it versus multiple builders and somebody's left with a lot in the middle and you got no way to excavate the dirt and get it out of there and, you know, so it does work in this circumstance. It is a product and a price point that's needed in the village and this is the way to do it.
It's a very strategic way to build, I mean, every inch has to be accounted for and it starts on the development side with just the way we line the utilities and stub the utilities and, I mean, everything is precise on where the water, the sewer, the electric-
Everything's figured out, it's all planned, it all works and-
And then when we build- And, and then when we build the houses, same thing, we, we will identify where the spoils will go, where they get moved, um, and where they get spread and which, which order the houses will get built, just to make sure that, that everything is, is done accordingly here.
My last question is, is this already in the urban service area?
Yes.
Yes.
We don't, you don't have to go to the car ability in this case.
It's in the, yeah, it's in the village.
Yeah, we appreciate that, too.
It's a couple steps.
You saw the comments from our engineer?
Yes, we did, uh, we talked through those yesterday in a meeting, um, very good conversation about it and certainly something, you know, we can work through as we go.
Well, I didn't write, write down the exact locations, but, um, I, I'd be very honest, before I even, we might consider, I need to, I need to look at these facilities. I need to see your properties.
Yeah.
Cause I just, I, I just, I can't fathom a thirty-one foot yard, I'm a lot, and I just, I'm sorry, I can't.
No, I, I understand, and again, it's, it's a newer concept, um.
I relate it to bowhoney, I don't even shoot a deer that close.
Be happy to set, set up something for you, to go look at something.
I would like.
There's other reasons they don't get that close to you.
Yeah.
We got some addresses to some of those parcels that might be helpful, just to share with the planning committee if they like to drive by.
If you have the addresses or something, just at the developments, I'd like to go see them and I'd like to see, um, well, this location's near Sub Zero and near the other place out there. It's, it's some, it's a larger development, correct? Does it have a mixture of something like this?
Um, it, it doesn't, cause it's, it, that's mainly, mainly pointed towards the, the real first time, it's not in, as integrated as what this neighborhood is.
Okay, I get that, so I, so it's more of a long, the smaller lots.
Correct, right, so, but we'll give you some examples where this is, this is exactly what they've done.
I really do, because it's, this is just so tight.
No, we get it.
Yes, Larry.
About three years ago in the spring, Jeannie set us up with a tour of west, east side of Madison and, and the Sun Prairie area where all of this type of, of, of housing is going in. And it was, uh, is impressive to me the way it was working out. And one of the things that stood out in my mind, uh, is that, uh, a couple of things, one had to do with the parks and they were, uh, they had gone away from, uh, a huge park or a couple of big parks because they, they got better usage out of the little pocket parks that were, uh, uh, families with kids loved those, they could watch their kids playing and didn't have to walk three or four blocks to get to a, to a park where the kids really were, were wanting to be back at home on Saturday morning or in their neighborhood. And that was one thing. The other thing was that the, uh, sizes of the houses over there were downsized, the flats obviously were downsized. Uh, but they were using houses, houses that were designed that looked, they were smaller, smaller footprint, that they looked like the larger house that people dream about, uh, from the outside. And, um, maybe we need to take another tour out there, but I, uh, there were a lot of interesting things that they were doing with that smaller space.
How, how many square foot house do you put out a thirty-one foot wide lot?
We have three different plans, um, fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred square feet, and again, with a basement. So, and, and two-car garage.
Obviously, obviously two-story.
Yeah, yeah, three-bedroom, uh, two-bath, kitchen, living room.
Might as well send them some, some floor plans, so I can look at them.
Yeah, we will.
The tour we had a couple of years ago was with Brian Munson, and we went through several of the Veridian developments that, that Saturday on tour and.
Yep, Brian's very good.
Good tour guide.
Right, I mean, he's.
Can elaborate on it.
Yeah, he can elaborate on it very well.
Anybody else have any questions? Get those to us soon, because I'm gonna say the same comments next time I see you.
I don't think Greg's buying any thirty-one foot lots anytime.
You're gonna take management.
It's not a big deal.
We'll make sure you all get that in.
I used to walk my dog in this field, so, you know.
That's private property.
The lease is the one at the time, at least built my house.
We'll get you out there.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
I just think I'm in more, how many houses have you put on the library?
Okay, thanks, Judy. Okay, move on. In communication and miscellaneous business, there's none, unfinished business, none. We have a new business item, which the public here to discuss and consider recommendations to the village board for a zoning map amendment for the new library site, two hundred El Pine Parkway. At this time, we'll open a public hearing. Staff reports.
So this is, um, almost the final step here for the library site, as Jeff mentioned, uh, we're planning on them being backed, the site plan approval or review and helpful approval at the August meeting. But this is a rezoning, um, for the new parcel that was created for the library. We did a comp plan amendment at our last meeting, so that parcel is now designated as institutional. So this is just, uh, to designate that new parcel boundary as entirely institutional. Right now, it's, part of it is still, uh, the park use and then, um, the southern half is the institutional. So really just, um, some, you know, bookkeeping here to clean up the, the parcel, um, zoning. But site plan, all that to come at the next meeting.
Petitioners or comments, you guys have anything to say? You've already said it, right? Public comments, anybody have any comments to the public hearing? No? Okay, plan commission members, anything? We're gonna close the hearing. Move on to, uh, discussion, possible recommendation to village board for rezoning map amendment, the new library site.
So moved, Bano.
We're gonna move, we have a second. Second, Mr. Marr, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item, uh, eight B, review and possible recommendation, village board for G D P to allow the planned development zoning at, at. Bando Ho, Bando Ho, I'm sorry.
Bodie Howe.
Bodie Howe, Bodie Howe.
Bando Development.
Brewing company. All right, let's talk about it.
All right.
Thanks for all your work.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Wishing them good luck.
So we all, we already held the public hearing for this, uh, at the last meeting, and there were some comments that were pretty substantial, um, site plan changes. So the decision was made to table, uh, the G D P and then pick this back up at the meeting. So, um, I'll let the guys here kinda walk through some of the changes, but I believe all of the changes requested have been made with regards to the parking, shifting the building to the north, adding some landscaping, rail a little bit more of a buffer from, um, the residential to the south there. And then making the drive aisle for the drive-through a little bit easier to navigate, um, but I'll turn over to Yalda kinda walk us through the plan a little bit.
Sounds good, thanks, Lee. Dan Burtler, Supreme Structures, I'm here representing Jamie Bush, uh, the owner of J E D Enterprise or Partnership or L C, what he is. And Dylan is our civil engineer with J T Engineering. As Lee said, we, I would not call them substantial changes, I thought they were very good changes. Um, based on John's recommendation, he wanted the building slid to the north. Uh, my biggest concern is we had a surcharge sitting out there since last October. And, uh, Dylan went out the next day and GPS mapped it and we're good. So we were able to keep rolling with John's recommendation and it actually helped out, out on a couple other items. The other item, we did a couple utility, uh, changes and those plans are now updated, I believe, in the, in the packet.
I don't know if they're in the packet, but.
Yeah, I just, yeah, we have that sheet pulled up here though.
Um, if anyone wants to dive into that, Dylan can speak on that. The other change I made was after hiring our H A C designer and looking at all the loads, um, from the brewing side to the coffee side to the bike shop, um, it was evident what kinda tonnage I needed. So we wanted to go to a flat roof on the right-hand side, you got elevation, Jeff?
Maybe.
Yeah.
Let's see. Elevations are towards the back, right there.
Yep. Sorry about that. Artitecturally, everything stayed the same except right to the east, that, that corner, there used to be a, a other corner, sorry.
This one?
Yep.
Okay.
Or to the south, I should say, I'm sorry. That went to a flat roof, uh, with a parapet to hide the rooftop unit. So technically, now between my exhaust, my two rooftop units on the north side and one on the south side, we got it zoned, it's covered. The one comment that was brought up last time was the photometric, we are off the property line. Um, I know what you're asking for in foot candles, and we're more happy to put the building lights on the building or the site lighting on the building. But the reason we put them on that back park on the east side is we're facing the existing parking lot. And you have detention in the village property that goes forever. And we just thought, whoever's coming down the road, they're not looking at a light shining at you on the east side of the building. The light is shining towards the existing parking lot over, over the existing building. So we could go either way with that, obviously a pole light's a lot more expensive for me than, than, uh, putting it on the building, but we're happy to have your comments on that. Anything else?
Um, I think just with regard to the G D P, um, there was actually a lot of the flexibilities that went away with the changes made. So the setback, fencing, the curious surface, I think all of those conditions were approved with the, or were improved with that, um, change. So really just the use flexibilities with the restaurant indoor/outdoor, um, and then the drive-through use, the bicycle shop, um, that's allowed by right business type use here. And then the parking count flexibility is the, the main, um, exception from planned business that would be requested. And I think that's gonna be okay here because we do that shared parking lot. So, um, they will only have seventeen parking spaces on the Bodie Howe parcel itself. Um, typically, given the mix of all of the uses, all the seats at the bar and the, um, the square footage of the bike shop, everything. I calculated fifty-three parking spaces would be required per our code, um, so they're only showing seventeen. But overall, there's a hundred and thirty-one spaces as part of the overall headquarters lot. So I think, given the hours when, um, this building is probably be used more during the day, where headquarters is more used in the evening, I don't foresee a lot of conflict there. We do have on-street parking horse as well.
That is correct, we, we have the drive-through for morning crowd, um, the bike shop is almost every use there. It's not, I would not call it a, a bar or, yes, it's a brewery, but it is a different climate.
Right, it's not a late, late night type business.
No.
Do we typically require some sort of a parking access agreement or something, since it is two different parcels, obviously both owned by the same person?
It may not be in the future.
Could be conveyed to somebody else in the future and it might be a good idea if there was a, an agreement in place.
Yeah, we could work with them, that's the fact, to, to make sure that between those two parcel numbers, that's.
Wouldn't get forgotten to somebody when somebody sells one of them.
Yep.
Good idea.
That doesn't happen, Scott.
Thanks for doing everything, um, I, I think that, I think the project is better because of it, and I'm glad that it worked out with the surcharge.
Yep.
Do we need to have any flexibility for, or make a comment about the flexibility with the pole lights? Just make it a condition of approval?
It's not necessarily the pole lights as much as, I think our, our, isn't our ordinance one foot candle at the property one?
It's a half.
Half a foot candle.
And it's bleeding onto the village property.
Right, you know, and you can see on most of this, it's really, and, and I'm with Dan on this one, I mean, we're, we're off into nothingness.
No, I, I agree, but it is a flexibility.
I think it should be just a flexibility in the.
Yeah.
So just make it a condition of approval.
Lighting ordinance, so we need to note that.
Just so it's clear, so no, so someone doesn't, because, and, and with the, Dan knows this, and, um, with the downdraft or down-facing LEDs now, I've been amazed at how very little bleed those have, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add that to the list of the flexibilities before it gets to the board.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you, I think it's the right thing to do and the right approach.
Yeah.
We have been tou- in touch with, uh, Rukert Milkie, refers to modifications in some of the water and sanitary locations from our previous layout. And I should have received a letter from him today, um, going through it.
Okay, yep, I saw that.
We're on the same page.
Okay. So I will make a motion for approval contingent upon the items of flexibility described in the planner's letter, as well as the, uh, flexibility for photometrics.
And then, uh, shared parking agreement.
And, yes, cross-access agreement, cause it's gonna be for drive aisles and truck traffic and blah, blah, blah.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We do have the S I P yet.
I know, I'm, I'm getting to that.
Don't go too far.
Yeah, they gotta sit down yet, wait, yes. Review and possible approval of S I P plan for Bodie Howe Brewing at two oh one Concord Drive. We have a motion to approve the S I P.
Make a motion to approve with the same comments as the.
We have a second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, now you.
Now.
Now you can go.
Your excuse.
Have a good night.
Thanks, thank you, you bet. Okay, status of, uh, development projects.
Said this before, but, uh, South Prairie Parkway slash Janesville intersection, I've got it moved from today to the twenty-fifth as a start of construction. They only have thirty days to do it, so once they break ground and it has to be done by Labor Day, I believe, so they're, they're bumping up against it. But that, that leaves some pretty quick work out there, actually.
Utilities have been underway for a couple weeks.
Utilities are on, are working out there, um, so that's coming along nicely. You know, phase three, you probably see if you ever drive out near, uh, Highlands and Netherwood, um, it's pretty impressive. Lennar is, is going to town out there.
Yep.
Houses, um, but that's been a, a good process so far, a few little kinks, but we've worked those out.
J C Park.
Huh?
J C Park.
J C Park is ongoing, you saw the.
I guess it's all the dust, the dust, those be, it's settled from the trees going down.
Yes, yes, one of my neighbors said, hey, you could really see the fireworks this year. I'm like, yeah, okay, well, but, uh, yeah, that's going along nicely and you see the underdrain going in, a lot of the underground utilities are going in right now. And things are going well. I mean, we, we do have some, you know, upcoming, uh, projects that will be, the lead services are getting replaced in the village, which is really good. And, um, just some other, hopefully we'll be starting on the village hall here pretty soon, uh, the, the new village hall. Yeah, any other questions of what's going on? Hot mic.
Yeah, how soon, yeah, actually, what is the scheduled, uh, completion for J C Park?
Well, the main work will be done, we, we really hope to have grass planted and irrigating out there by October first. I know.
It's cooking.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's very good, it, it, once they get all this other stuff done, it goes pretty fast.
Correct, correct.
They got some, got some pretty quick.
But we still have to rebid the concession stamp.
Really, okay.
Cause that came in so high, so we'll.
What about the village hall, when's that scheduled, scheduled to be occupied?
Very good question, um, we have, we have a construction, a contract that is being signed right now, um, with, uh, Arnsen, what is that?
Never, I saw that, but I've never heard of him.
Uh, J A Arnsen, is that right, or?
Fox.
Oh, huh?
Is it Fox?
Fox Arnsen, yes, with no space. Yeah, um, they're gonna be doing the work and soon as we really have a construction kickoff, I'll have a better date. I'll have a better date. I'll, I'll be honest with you, it's a little later than I had hoped, but we're, we're functioning here, we'll continue to function here.
Oh, we have Christmas trees in there?
Yes.
In the new facility?
No.
So in other words, it's not gonna be done by the first of the year.
No.
Yeah, you missed the Saint Gaudemire, wasn't it, and now we're, now you're missing.
Yeah. We've had so much stuff going on, to be honest with you, that it's just been, and there, and there were some delays that we had in, but there's, we're also having to work to get high-speed, high-speed internet out there for our facility, which would probably require a tile, a tower at the police department, so we can bounce off the tower, the water tower down to there. There's been a lot, it's been a new, new territory for us on a couple of things, so, and quite honestly, there's just a lot of delays in some of the equipment and things that we need.
Oh, I saw, nobody dropped the balls, would you tell me?
Oh, I've dropped the ball.
Okay, just wanted to know who did.
No, 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 there's just things, yeah. We've had plenty of other things going on, and we've put those on priority ahead of our offices.
Just trying to pick a fight.
You want that, you, you want the new building.
Yeah, I'd just like to see it.
Yeah. I'll take you out, it, it's, it's on a thirty-five-foot lot out there, I don't know if you've ever seen it.
Thirty-one.
See, the thing is, this is gonna be, this will be televised sometime, so I'm gonna behave myself, so that's fine. Okay, but yeah, projects are going well, that's good, thank you.
Yeah, they are.
Meeting dates, do you have something, an open house?
Yeah, so.
So why don't you tell us about that?
Sure, so this is for the former new library site on North Main Street, the sanctuary property, the little Methodist Church site, so the board has elected to hold kind of a community engagement process through this, so we're doing some due diligence work right now, kind of summarizing a lot of the studies and the work that's already been done on library site. We're working with our Van Wall consultants on this. We'll be holding a open house, so just a walk of the property and then a public workshop on Tuesday, the nineteenth. The walk is four-thirty to five-thirty, and then we'll be back here for a workshop, and then there will be a survey sent out to the community, it'll be randomly mailed out to about a third of the residents and businesses in town, just to try to get a representative sample from folks and get them caught up to speed on the property, some of the history, what the village paid for the property, and then some thoughts on potential uses for the site. I know the board has gotten a couple comments about trying to, there may be some interest in having another date of the workshop to offer, in case people aren't available this evening, so we'll be talking about that out there at July eleventh meeting, so if there's another date added, I'll make sure that you all are aware, but as far as this moment in time, this is the date, survey will go out after the workshop happens, and then probably September, late September, early October, we'll have a summary report from Van Wall summarizing all they heard, all they learned about the process, and then from that point, potentially a recommendation as to what to do next with the property.
Okay, great. August fourth, there's a joint meeting of the village board for a public hearing for comprehensive plan amendments.
We just did those, but.
I missed.
Got a couple more, yep. So that'll be for the F property on CC right across from Mulligan's, and then the change for the Ludopolis All-Star duplexes to Town Homes right north of Beehive, so we kind of went over those last meetings, but.
I will be spending time with grandchildren.
All right, you enjoy yourself. We'll be thinking of you.